Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March -- excuse me. I'm a little off today. The February meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room in case of mishap or emergency. And now please join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda, new public hearing for Roosevelt Fire Station. I am recused from this application, so therefore I will turn it over to Vice Chair Ann Dexter.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward? Oh, yes. Thank you.
Hey, Dad. How are you?
Thanks, Ian.
Hey, anytime. Okay, gentlemen. And this is a public hearing, right? Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening. Richard Olson of the law firm of McCabe and Mack. Dennis Ross is the architect on the project. And Roger Keating is also here. He's the professional engineer with Chazen Associates. This board will remember back in August of last year, you granted conditional final approval for this project. And at that time, we went out to bid. When the bids came in, unfortunately, we found out that we significantly exceeded our capacity to pay for the projects. So we had to go about the concept of reducing the size of the building in order to bring it within our bonding capability. Our architect has gone through and surgically removed portions of the building, which he will go over with you. But other than that, you have exactly the same project that you had before, except for a 14,000-square-foot building is now down to about 12,000 square feet. Ten parking spaces have been banked. Provision has been made for them, but instead of impervious surface, it is now being left as grass for future development if need be. There is no change in the drainage system on the property. All of the other considerations that we had under the seeker that you had given last year are still valid. I believe your engineer will confirm the fact that none of the changes that were made to this plan affect anything other than the fact that it's a reduced size, and we hope it will come within our bidding capacity, our bonding capacity. With that, I'll let Mr. Ross go through any of the details with you.
Right. And just to remind, we did recon -- made a -- we reconfirmed seeker at the last meeting.
Correct.
Great. As Rich said, we surgically removed some square footage. Basically, we took a section out of the center of the building, squeezed the bays down a little bit, and took some off the end. What we did not do was change any of the stone front. We did not change the nature of the peaked roofs, the windows, the shutters, or any of the aesthetics that were important to this board on Route 9G. One thing we did do, and it's not visible from the road, is in the back, we added a small piece of what we call low-sloped roof so that we could put a couple of HVAC units on top of it. And we simplified the entrance a bit. Left the sign the same. The only difference now is there's wood poles, and the blue light is still on there. Other than that, it's essentially, as Rich said, exactly the same project.
Great.
And from the site perspective, just to reiterate, the site is basically the same with the exception that the footprint of the building did walk in. We reduced some parking, some really -- a lot of minor items that were throughout. You know, there was three flag poles in front of the site before. There's now two, just some of those minor items. When the items, such as the mechanicals, went onto the roof, there were concrete pads throughout the site to support some of those. Those pads now are gone. So realistically, the building footprint is the main reduction with the reduction in the impervious cover associated with the parking. And there's one less pole light on the project because of the reduction in the parking. All the landscaping and everything along those lines is all the same from when you last looked at the project.
Excuse me, did you say pervious or impervious?
Impervious. That's what I did.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Anything else? All right. I'm just going to ask our consultants if they could weigh in before we open up for the public.
I'm fine.
Ms. Moss, Mr. Sotero.
Yeah, we had gone through the plans. We were asked to look at the most current set of plans.
Right.
And just see if there was -- I mean, outside of the changes that, you know, they've talked about, whether there was any other changes to the plans from the previously approved set. I mean, outside of a few note changes, and there was some -- there was some changes made, I believe, to the fueling area in the back. There were some additional notes that were added for the water system. I assume that was for, you know, health department, you know, reasons. But, you know, for the most part, outside of a couple of small changes, the plans are basically, you know, the same as what you had approved previously. So one thing that I did want to mention, and I think I sent you guys an email, was that our last agenda meeting, we talked about the lights, the site lights. And, you know, I guess we really didn't go over the site lights too much previously, but they're currently proposing a shoebox-type, you know, fixture.
Oh, right.
You guys want to comment on it?
Yeah, we chose not to go that route. We felt it was more important to stick with what the board had previously approved. So we got rid of the shoebox. We're back to exactly what they approved with the gooseneck fixtures. Everything's exactly the same.
Is that on the updated plans, or that will be, or we'll make it a condition?
The actual fixtures and everything that were called out on the plans are actually the gooseneck.
Oh, they are?
But the detail is what was causing some of the confusion.
Oh, okay, that's.
We put a detail to kind of show the pole configuration and how it would relate to the base.
Okay.
But we didn't change the fixture, per se, for the top.
Oh, okay. Maybe it was just, you know, the detail that.
The detail, I would think, is what got people crossed up.
All right.
We showed -- we didn't show the specific light fixture for.
Okay, so we'll just make that a condition and.
Yeah, we'll --
That update.
You'll update.
Yeah, that's fine.
We fix that by addenda, Pete, so that everything's in concert.
All right, good. That's great.
Yep.
And I think we kept all the same conditions as before. I'm sure some of them may have been addressed, but, you know, we'll just go through them at the end. And then what would make it easy, once -- when you submit the plans for signature, if you could just make it easy for us and just go through condition by condition, if there's any, like approvals attached, like the letters all behind it, so.
Okay. Sure.
Idiot-proof, I call it.
We can do that.
Idiot-proof. So that's all that I had. Thanks.
The other comment I had was about the sign. When you were here last time, the board granted a sign bonus for the proposed letter height, and we just wanted to make sure that the sign size didn't change at all.
Not at all.
Okay.
It's just materials, I think.
So it's all consistent with the.
Just the two posts sold in it is the only change that the signs undergone.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
That was it. And then we should add a fifteenth condition that says, "Revision of the site plan to correct the site lighting detail."
One moment. Mr. Signa?
Yeah.
I think you may have this.
I have this.
Figure I might as well.
Do it now.
Yep, add it, ma'am.
Revision of the site plan set to correct the lighting detail to show gooseneck fixture? Okay.
Got it.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. While we're up here, Mr. Signa, do you have any comments or questions?
Not at this point.
Okay. Mr. Murphy?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
No comment.
Okay, great. At this one, I'd like to open this up for public comment. And so if you guys could just make us a space there. I'd like to ask anybody who'd like to come down and comment on this application, please stand up, come down, state your name, and let us know your thoughts.
I added all these.
Thank you.
Hear me here. Gina Martino, 13 Franklin Road. I've come before the board before. I'd like to thank you at one of the previous planning board meetings because you made this available to the public, which was very, very helpful. It was nice to share with the neighbors. And again, we do have some concerns, and we brought them before the board before. Knowing that the footprint has been reduced, and there's more, well, pervious area now included on the site, we were a little bit curious to find out how that would affect the one basin, the one that's on the eastern side and towards the south, along the southern border. Because that's a very highly sensitive area to the water table. And I think I mentioned it before in the presentation, that that particular area has seen in the past 10 years a problem with groundwater seepage in their basements. And that's relatively new. And it seems to be spreading, going across the street into some of the other properties, so that is a concern. And one of the things I know that for infiltration basins is that one of the required elements, basically, is that infiltration practices cannot be placed in locations that cause water problems, whether it's -- and I'm assuming that that's groundwater seepage because it's infiltration, as well as runoff, you know, to downgrading properties, which that would be. So we were wondering if, with the changes in the footprint, if possibly, since when the test pits were done last year in May, going back and looking at the weather, that was four months of below-average precipitation. So the ground level at that point, when the test pits were done, might not really reflect what an average groundwater level would be. This might be the year to do it. Because if you look outside, who knows what the spring is going to be, but we know there's going to be a lot of snow melt. So while -- right before construction, and maybe even during construction, not to the whole site, but just to where, just south of that basin, and also along where the discharge is going to be. So that if it's done in a way of monitoring, from before construction, during construction, to the point where they're ready to put the basin in, that gives them an idea of just what the influence is going to be on the groundwater flow. Because surface water is easy to detect. Groundwater is not. And again, one of the required elements is that these properties should not be affected by this, by any type of infiltration basin that's been put in. So that's one thing we wanted to bring up. The other thing is that with the overflow, the discharge, I know there was kind of dismissive last -- at the last public hearing, where in a hundred-year, you know, everyone's going to have problems. So this is going to be not important, the fact that the overflow might cause property damage, or might, you know, do something to the downgrading properties along that southern, you know. And again, that's contrary to what New York State Stormwater Management Design Manual indicates, that this is the point where the storm management plan should kick in at its maximum protection, not its minimum protection. And I'd like to point out that that particular site has seen a lot of changes over the year. And 10 years ago, it was used as a staging site. And looking at the pictures, at one time, this was all woods. All these woods were cut down. And what you see in the Google is now just sort of like bare minimal vegetation. I know that some of the neighbors felt that that was -- that probably could have contributed to some of the water problems, because without the wood, without that water intake from what was there before, the groundwater has been a little bit higher. So the question is that, since that extends all the way down to almost the last house on the southern portion, it goes almost down to the intersection, that if that stormwater is great, the gradient is allowed to stay as is, and that land is allowed to be barren, how does that going to affect the runoff, as well as the flooding issues or the groundwater issues? And can something be done? Because again, we're looking for the maximum protection that the stormwater plan has, not only for the firehouse, but also for the adjacent properties. What can be looked at as far as doing something, maybe, to allow that it is going to regrow because it's going to be undisturbed? But you're going to have what? There were decades of growth in that particular lot before it was all cut down, and it's going to take decades for it to get back again. Is there something that can be done in the interim? And basically, that's it. And I thank you for.
Thank you very much. Pete, did you want to talk at all to the stormwater and the drainage and the basin?
I mean, actually, with this current plan that we're approving, there's going to be less impervious area. And they're not making any changes to the stormwater basins. They're going to leave them the same size as they were, that large light gray area that you see over there, if you look over on the map. In behind, you know, the building, that was going to be parking before. That's now going to be land-banked parking, some of that, right?
It's going to be grass now.
Right. So, you know, my guess is that won't ever, you know, be put in. So they never -- and they haven't downsized the size of the basins.
Yes.
And what we discussed the last time is, we didn't, like, dismiss anything. And honestly, we did not say that everybody's going to have, like, problems during a 100-year storm. What we said was that this -- their calculations show that the 100-year storm will be contained within the stormwater basins, and that we were going to regrade what they had shown as the emergency overflow, so that it was not like a defined, you know, overflow, because they really don't need to have it. Their 100-year storm will be contained all within their basins. And I think by the fact of them downsizing the building and landbanking the parking, that those stormwater basins did even provide more capacity than they were going to be, you know, providing, you know, before. And honestly, some of the problems in that area that I think the people more to the east are experiencing is, years ago, when the DOT had redone 9G up in that area, they took all that drainage water and brought it down Wright Avenue and just dumped it out into the back, you know, the wetlands, with no drainage controls or anything. And I don't remember when that was, but I'm sure some of these guys can, like, remember. I think it was -- well, I mean, I was the engineer at the time, so it had to be after 1995, because I remember them, like, doing it. But they brought all that water from all up by Havilland Plaza on 9G, right down Wright Avenue, and just dumped it in the back. So, I mean, that's -- I'm sure that's been, you know, a cause of some of the flooding, you know, way in the back. Up here in the front, it's all, you know, gravel, I mean, as far down as they could dig.
But is it possible just to monitor, since there are problems along that one side with the groundwater, and now you have an infiltration basin that's going to put more water into?
Well, see, now, it's not going to put more water. And, you know, we had gone through this, you know, before. You know, the site is basically a flat site, for, you know, the most part. So right now, if there was seven inches of rain that fell on that site today, and then there was seven inches of rain after they, like, developed this, it's going to be the same amount of rainfall, because it's not running off of that flat site.
Open down.
It basically comes down and goes, and goes right into, you know, the ground. So when they, like, develop this, yeah, they're going to have asphalt. But that doesn't mean that it's going to create more impervious area. It's still the same footprint area. It's still the same seven inches of rain. Now, it may get into the groundwater faster because of the fact of it's running off the roof, it's running off the parking areas. But as far as, you know, the volume of water, it's not going to change from what's out there, you know, today.
Well, a question, because I noticed that, as I was looking at the infiltration basin, I noticed that on the northern side, the groundwater was at 12 feet. And then as you went closer to the south, it was higher up. So there's a huge difference in the groundwater level between.
Well, that would make sense, because that's like, that area on the north is a little bit, you know, lower. So that would make sense, the groundwater elevations are different.
Yes, and it seems to be that the groundwater seems to be able to be handled better on the north side, and on the south side.
Roger, in these, in some of these basins, don't you guys have inspection ports or some -- aren't there ports there that, like, are monitoring ports, I believe?
Yes. One of your comments previously was so that we could get some pipes put into the ground with.
Right.
So that we could actually promote that.
Infiltration, and those can also be used, you know, as monitoring ports. So we've already got that built in.
And if we do experience problems on the south side after the infiltration basins are put in, what would be the solution? What could be an alternative in order to -- because again, groundwater, once it gets into the ground, again, you know, you had to do test pits to determine what the groundwater level was at various places, because it's not so obvious. The fact that it's very high along the southern boundary where the.
If there was, if there was a problem, perhaps there could be some, you know, additional drainage. You're talking on the north side?
No, no, this is the south side.
On the south side, there, I mean, there's.
The voters were there.
There's probably an opportunity to redirect some of that towards the basin on, you know, the north side. In fact, I think they're interconnected, aren't they?
I think they are.
Right. So that also provides another, you know, safeguard.
So what we tried to do was.
Are you going to try to bank it towards the north?
Evenly distribute that over the widest and largest possible area, so that it acts as closely to the existing condition as it does under pulse conditions. So, but yes, they are interconnected with equalization.
Okay. Good. All right. Now, but I would still like to see some testing done, you know, just precautionary, because again, ground levels last year were below average.
Yep.
This year, you know, they are. And just to see what would happen, just the two, one south of the basin and one, you know, just even with the discharge, you know, within 10 feet of the property, just to be able to get an idea of what is happening there. It might not be nothing, but if something is found before the construction is actually completed, what a great time, then, to make the necessary adjustments to the infiltration basins or to the gradient of it, to allow for more water at the intake at the 12-foot, where it's better able to handle it, as opposed to the more southerly one that did not, you know, that's higher to begin with.
Understood. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward and speak? I don't believe we have anybody else who would like to speak. So at this moment, we can decide to close the public hearing. Do you have a motion to close?
So moved. I moved we close the public hearing. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing has been closed. And again, this application has already received approval from this board. And that approval was done with all the studies and all of the recommendations of the consultants in their areas of expertise, including stormwater and drainage and traffic and everything else. So at this time, I think we would like to put this up for vote. Who has this?
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Oh, sure.
Pete, monitoring, Peter. Hello, Pete.
Yeah.
Monitoring that, would that be an expensive proposition, or something that would not have a lot of.
There could be test holes. No, there could be, you know, some test holes that are dug during, you know, the construction.
Can you see merit in that situation?
I mean, it doesn't, you know, hurt, you know, to do it, you know, to dig down to, you know, the levels.
Like along the south side?
You could do, like, a test pit in each one of, you know, the stormwater basins, you know, if we want to, when they start, you know, construction.
And one thing, though, to note, too, Pete, is we are required, as part of the DUC's program, to do weekly inspections on the project as part of a SWIP inspection process. So there are engineers, you know, going to the site, inspecting the site weekly. So if there was something that was encountered while construction activities were happening, there'd be an opportunity. Could you get close to the microphone, please?
There'd be an opportunity at that point in time to obviously, if there was the need to make corrective action.
Is that something you would take up with the town engineer?
Well, as the MS4, we would obviously communicate with the town.
I mean, we'll have to go out and inspect the site, you know, periodically, and because we're required, you know, to sign off on the certificate of occupancy. So, I mean, we could dig a couple. Once you have the excavators out here to dig, you know, the footings and all that stuff, I mean, we could certainly dig a couple test holes, just, you know, to confirm, you know, your findings, whenever you're going to build.
You guys comfortable with that?
They're going to be digging the holes. So, I mean, we're going to have representation on the site.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to be out there anyway. It's just to dig a hole a little deeper is not really, not an issue.
I think, as Pete said, he's going to be out there inspecting this, so if he sees anything.
Yeah, no, I know Pete is, but, you know, I'm just saying that, you know, I think we want to accommodate people if it's not a unreasonable request.
Right, well, with the equipment that's out there.
And I don't think us up here on the board know what kind of request it is.
Yeah, no, as I said, when the equipment's out there and Pete is out there.
Yeah, we're not going to make a special trip, but.
Yeah, you could have them dig it.
We could dig, and I can make a report on that. That's fine.
That makes me a lot more comfortable.
How would we memorialize that, this?
Based on site conditions when Pete's out there doing inspections.
Right.
As part of the stormwater permit, you're going to have to execute a stormwater maintenance and easement agreement.
Right.
Which allows the stormwater management officer to go out and do inspections. So it could be annual inspections, it could be every three months, it's whatever is called for in their SWIP, and they'll have to file reports. So there's going to be ongoing inspections and maintenance.
Yeah. He's an officer, so he's the one to put that in.
And the results of that would be public, right? So.
They are filed with the stormwater management officer.
So somebody who needs to see them to see what happens, she could see.
And also, just a brief thing, last May and June, the rainfall was above average. We had, I think, three or four storms, where we received, like, two to six inches of rain. I don't know if anybody recalls that, but there were a lot of flooding issues. So if you dug your test pits at that time, I think that's the most rain, you know, I've seen in a long time, so.
There were, I know there were rain events.
Major rain event.
Really, right before our testing that took place, but can't recall the exact dates, but I can remember coming up onto Wright Avenue, and there's still being large puddles up near the.
Your groundwater was down pretty far, if I remember.
Yes, it was.
So.
That's good.
But we can do, we can do that, though.
Okay.
We agree with that.
And that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay. You ready?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution granting amended site plan approval Roosevelt Fire Station number three, February 19th, 2014, resolution number 48-12D. Whereas, 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 now, therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby reaffirms the waivers granted on August 7th, 2013, for the reasons set forth in resolution number 48-12B. And be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grant site plan approval to the site plan set and authorizes the chair or his designated designee to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all outstanding escrow balances. Two, Department of Health approval for methods of water supply and sewage disposal. Three, DC/WWA approval of the water connection. Four, conceptual approval from the New York State Department of Transportation for the curb cut onto New York State Route 9G. Five, approval from the town highway superintendent of the curb cut onto Wright Avenue. Six, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation approval of an incidental take permit for Blanding's turtle habitat. Seven, revision of the fuel pump area on SP4 and related note as approved by the planning board engineer. Eight, issuance of a stormwater management permit from the town of Hyde Park. Nine, revision of SP2 to include a flashing blue light on the monument sign to alert the public of an impending emergency response. The triggering mechanism for the flashing light shall be approved by the planning board engineer. Ten, revision of SP2 to delete the sidewalk note and replace it with the following new note. The seven-foot wide sidewalk area along Route 9G frontage shall be maintained as a grassed area until such time as the fire district or other entity installs a hard-surface sidewalk. The area shall be maintained free of brush and mowed regularly. Eleven, revision of SP2 to replace the word "will" with "shall" in the first, fourth, and eighth lines of the Equipment Washing and Maintenance Code, I'm sorry, note. Twelve, submission of a light fixture detail compliant with the zoning law as approved by the zoning administrator and planning board engineer. Thirteen, regrade water wear number two so that it is not a pronounced emergency overview wear to be approved by the planning board engineer. Fourteen, revision of the site plan set to include a signature block for the planning board chair. Fifteen, revision of the site plan set to correct lighting plan detail to show gooseneck fixtures.
We do have a sixteenth condition.
All right.
That was requested by our building and zoning department. It's going to be on all future resolutions. It's going to say, "Revision of the site plan set to include the following note." We, we do have a 16th condition that was requested by our, our building and zoning department. Um, it's gonna be on all future resolutions. It's gonna say revision of the site plan set to include the following note, parking and fire access comply with the building code of New York State and fire code of New York State.
Revision of the site plan set...
To include the following note.
To include the following note...
Parking and fire access comply with the building code of New York State and fire code of New York State.
Parking and fire... Come on, you're almost there.
Parking and fire access...
Good.
Comply...
Comply.
With...
With?
The BCNYS.
BCNYS.
And FCNYS.
FCNYS.
And that, this is a condition that we've been asked to put on all of our resolutions moving forward.
Okay, good.
It's gonna be standard.
Is that the final notation there?
That's number 16, revision of the site plan set to include the following note, parking and fire access comply with the BCNYS and FCNY.
Second motion.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
What'd we say, it was leave?
I know, everybody's gone. I know. All right. I don't like your last comment.
Anne, could you sign that?
Aye.
Ken, here you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The next item on the agenda is Gilbert Farm. The applicants are seeking an amendment to an approved site plan to relocate a proposed mini golf. And welcome back, Mr. Casamento.
Good evening.
By the way, is everyone ready? Congratulations, by the way. Thank you again, Vice Chair.
That's right, this is...
This is strictly a workshop, if you will call. The applicant was before us, some years back, with, and we approved at that time a driving range. We also approved a mini golf. At the time, I think when we reviewed it and approved it, we were thinking of putt-putt golf, a traditional style that...
Correct.
Had rotating windmills, where you had to avoid the windmill, yeah, and maybe go into a clown's mouth, and you've revised that now to be more like an actual golf course. I think that's where the industry has gone, is instead of the kitschy campy stuff, it's really like a miniature course where you actually have sand traps, water elements, et cetera. You probably get a better practice for real putting on this, but I think it still looks like it'd be fun for children or young people. We also approved at the time two buildings that were going to be used for recreation. The mini golf and the two recreational buildings were put into a later phase.
Correct.
And in the meantime, basically, in speaking to some of your customers who are there with their children...
Correct.
They have their kids and they're doing the driving range, and they would love to see a golf, the mini golf there for the children, but it's so far away, they couldn't, they wouldn't have an eye on them.
Correct.
I'll let you turn, I'll turn it over to you now. Go ahead.
The, the intent of it originally was to go with it at the same time as the two buildings, and due to the economy, those buildings aren't conceivable at the moment, and therefore, through the discussions with the requests of having it, we've worked out an alternate to see if we could move it to where we originally had our chipping and putting area, basically. So it's still within the same area of disturbance that we originally had proposed, just relocated from one side of the site to the other.
And the, there's no increase in the size of the footprint of the golf course? Nothing's changed except for the relocation, which means there's a, you've redirected some of the stormwater from one area to another area of the site because of the size of the location. Otherwise, I'll remind the board that when we did the original seeker findings on this, we evaluated possible traffic impacts, sound impacts, et cetera. This would really meet, sort of moving a puzzle piece, so to speak, within the overall outline, as far as I'm concerned. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Casamento?
Nope, that's really it.
Let me turn this over to the consultants first. Ms. Moss, I noticed you're still here. Do you have any comments on Gilbert Farm, the mini golf?
No.
Mrs. Sotero, any comments?
Probably the only thing we're gonna wanna talk to the applicants about a little bit is the lighting. You guys are gonna have lighting?
Yes.
You're gonna have some night golf. So I just see where some of the fixtures are, you know, the tilt-type fixtures, so we'll just wanna probably work with you guys, so that, especially on the ones that might face the Hidden Brook, um, park that we don't wanna have any...
Tilted park.
...glare, and then we probably wanna talk about having them turned off at a certain hour. I mean, you know, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna want that too.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be turned off when we close, basically.
So, that's, that's what I see.
Thank you, and as someone who's been at the location before for the driving range, I'll note that some of their best customers actually come from Hidden Brook.
I'm sure. I'm sure it'll get more customers with the mini golf.
That's what I'm thinking. Um, I'm just finding that ironic since it was Hidden Brook that sued the planning board initially over our secret determination and our approval of the site plan. It's nice that they've come around the opposite way now. Anything else, Mrs. Sotero?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Casamento, what, what hours would you have the golf course operating at during the summer?
Um, exact hours, we don't know just yet. Our goal would be to be able to be open at least on the Friday, Saturday till at least 10:30, 11:00.
In my head, I was thinking about 11:00, because I know you've got some minor concessions and through there, so kids or adults and young people could pertake of refreshments there and stay out a little bit longer if they wanted to.
Yeah, there's just the soda from the soda machine and that type thing.
Ice cream sandwiches. Okay. Any comments, Ms. Pollidoro?
The board should consider any new impacts resulting from the move, and if there aren't any or they're consistent with the prior approval, you could consider reaffirming your prior seeker determination, and tonight you can send it to county planning, although it does seem pretty far off the road, it is still on 9G.
It is, the interest is on 9G. Thank you for that guidance. Let me start to my right, Mr. Oliver, comments?
I think, I think it'd be a great improvement for, for Hyde Park, and I think, you know, it's, it's placement on the site plan next to the driving range, I think that's, that's a, you know, a pretty smart idea, so, you know, I, I'm excited to see it. I'm sure my wife and I would go there and play, so...
Good.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
I'm glad to see this moving into the next phase, and I also think it makes sense to relocate that so that it's more co-located.
That's the right term to use, yes.
Co-located, nice. Little cell tower.
Yeah, I haven't heard that used, that of a cell tower, but that is, that's a good term to use. Thank you. Mr. Murphy, any comments?
Yeah, I have a major concern, um, are you gonna disturb the Pizza Terra Memorial sand trap?
Well, I don't know if, I don't know if we ever got it.
Well, there is, the sand trap was altered to the area of the grass trap, so it's still there and will remain.
All right, then my concern to relieve you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Signa?
Yeah, um, the, the golf, mini golf is going to be on an impervious surface, correct? I think as we talked about it...
Yes.
Basically gonna be. And you're right adjacent to, to the wetland there. Are you gonna be, is that water gonna be running off towards the wetland or away, or...
Essentially, the way it's set up is it's almost flat, you know what I mean, the mini golf. There'll be some, you know, variations thereof, but all the areas outside of it are all stone, so there's no basins, there's no formal movement of stormwater, so all of it's going to just be through infiltration.
Okay, so you don't expect an increase to the west or the east?
No.
And that canal in the model, are you gonna put that in there?
It's in the picture you gave us.
No. That picture is just a representation of kinda the idea, but I am bringing the palm trees.
Oh, okay.
Palm trees, all right.
They'll fit with the snow.
Yeah, they'll be dead, they'll be dead shortly. That's, that's all I have, sir. Thank you, Mr. Signa. I will echo my colleagues' comments. I think it's a great use. I think it's a better location, given that I've been there and I've, I've heard you say, parents have said, why can't you do the golf, the mini golf here so we can be together, I can keep an eye on them. So as Anne said, the co-location is great. The only issues that I see in terms of seeker really were stormwater, and then, in the original, they were kinda being directed to the south. Now it's gonna be allowed just to infiltrate around the area.
There.
The area, having walked it extensively on numerous times, is completely cleared. It was a farm originally, and the wetland that's to the north has been, it's, it's controlled by the ECE, but it's fairly degraded. It's, the further away you get from where the farm was is where the better, the higher quality wetlands are. The other was, of course, lighting, and Pete caught on to that, that we don't want them to be, have any glare facing a neighborhood, that's a nice neighborhood next door, Hidden Brook, and we wanna ensure that there's some mechanism to control lighting turnoff. I think 11:00 sounds, or 11:30 sounds reasonable for summer nights, and clearly this is a seasonal use, you're not gonna have this open.
No.
Unless you wanna do skiing on it across country.
Snow golf.
Snow golf, right. The one, the other thing I had as an issue, and it's a minor, was when we discussed this the first time, we were, as I said, we were thinking of the putt-putt with more colorful, I'll say, designs, and Ms. Moss had kinda directed us to, we wanted to see architectural elevations. At this point, I don't think we need to see that, personally. I'm, I'm comfortable with going with kind of a schematic as represented, shown, and I see Ms. Moss is nodding, so I'm gonna put that in the record.
There's no dinosaurs.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, right, we don't have, right, yeah, please.
That's what I meant. We, yes. We were thinking if there was a big giant Darth Vader head or something about whether we should see this or not, since you don't propose that now, since it's really a mini golf.
No, definitely not gonna be.
As long as, and I...
We should pull the prior resolution. There were several conditions too about outdoor music, those are all gonna be...
They'll all be carried, carried through and over.
Oh, yeah.
And one of the concerns that we had, and by the way, this would probably be enhanced or exacerbated as a concern, given that it's closer proximity now to the neighborhood, is whether there was a speaker system, you know, out.
We weren't planning on it.
I think you said no, but just, we should go through all those issues again, once we get through, because of course, while we welcome new business into the community, particularly this kind of business, because young people, and all of us, something else to do, wanna make sure that we ensure that the quality of the neighborhood, quality of life of the neighborhood next door stays the same, if not, it's improved. So I guess for tonight, yes, Ms. Moss?
I do have, I do have one question. There was a cross-connection with the school district proposed over a culvert.
Wasn't that under the last phase?
And I just wondered if that's complete now?
No, that was when the building got built.
Right.
So when road went over to the school. We're not going over on that side.
Because there is a culvert, and there is an opening, just to let you know.
Okay. Used to me.
Wow.
He only owns the site.
I'll have to check on that one.
Hey, just an engineer, how would he notice things like that?
That's right.
Were you just over there to see it?
We share services with the school district, and the fueling station is there, so...
Right.
Yes, I'm looking in.
Eagle eye.
Okay.
That's true, you really do have a good vision there.
It's fine, I mean, I don't mind, I don't mind if it's there, but the culvert should be the right size.
Yeah, no.
Drainage should flow, and...
I, I didn't know one was put there, but I will check.
In the spring.
If it was one.
We'll find out.
In the spring.
You'll see it for one.
Wow.
Our code has changed regarding phasing now, right?
Yeah.
Microphone.
When, when this was approved, or after this was approved, the zoning law was changed regarding phasing of plans.
Okay.
So we're just gonna have to discuss how to deal with your future phases under the new zoning provision.
Can you remind us how it changed?
Not yet.
No, but she knows that something changed.
I know it changed.
Because I'm, I'm having a vague recollection of this, I thought we made it easier for phasing. That's, as I recall working on this, I think we made it easier...
I, I would like the opportunity to go back and look.
You may have it.
I wanna raise the issue.
You may have it. I think that actually we were, this, the phasing was, was proposed for, we were discussing phasing because the PDDs weren't treated differently in terms of phasing, and those projects require multi-year phasing. In addition, the SPCA application was going to, the, the equine, um, area was for Phase Z or something, and we wanted to make sure that there was a way that we may have to update seeker, but that we didn't want the approval to lapse, so I'll let you investigate.
I think, I think the way it works is that seeker's done on the whole project.
Right, it is.
Right, right.
I just don't know how to deal with the future two and three if they have to come back, or to build those.
Okay.
But we'll work that out.
And the reality of those is, there's probably going to be, when that time comes, some tweak in what the building footprint really is.
Probably.
So we...
You had a very specific, had a very specific use. It was for gymnastics. Your height was based on gymnastics, et cetera. So, and we also, we need to revisit that, but in the resolution, there are requirement or conditions that the buildings couldn't be used for certain kinds of recreational or commercial recreation, that included...
Showers.
Yes, all those. So we just wanna make sure, if we're, if we're reapproving, if we're reapproving that portion of this as we reapprove this...
Yes.
Then we need to take a look at the original resolution as well. So in the meantime, make it a motion to refer this to county planning under 239M.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't believe there's another involved or interested agency.
Is there a seeker now, or new one?
No, we'll do that by resolution in two weeks. Would that be acceptable to you, Ms. Pollidoro?
Mm-hmm.
You'll be able to prepare a resolution at that point, and we'll make certain with it, in the meantime, we'll all think about it, make sure there are no other seeker impacts that can possibly come to mind, but the wetlands have not, we had them looked at again under the last site plan amendment we did for this, which was the...
Airsoft.
Airsoft gun.
Right.
And I don't believe we've had anything, nothing else. This area, as I said, has already been completely cleared, it's a highly disturbed area, and I believe we took a hard look at traffic. We looked at everything possible last time. The only thing that would change, again, is perhaps the noise, but we pointed out to the Hidden Brook families that they're next to two different school sites essentially, and the sound carries from the normal, you know, hue and cry of kids out during recess. There's also exercise, or there's some recreational classes that are, that are taught at the Avalon Middle School after class, so there's always a sort of ambient level of noise.
I, I would suggest that the applicant just go through and give us a, a little breakdown narrative about why this is consistent with the prior seeker approval.
Great idea. So it's also make it a motion to set the public hearing for the March, I think it's the 9th?
The 15th.
We need to have 30 days for county planning to respond.
Oh, so it'd be a month from today, 19th.
So, so, March 19th.
That's 28 days.
We'll ask for an expedited response from Ms. Pollidoro.
Okay, March 19th, final answer?
Yes. Make it a motion to set a public hearing for that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Ms. Knapp, when you refer this to county planning, can you ask for an expedited review? It really is just flipping a puzzle piece, so to speak, so. Anything else from the consultants of the board? Okay, you can come back in two weeks if you want to, or you can come back in a month for a public hearing.
I'd just say come back once and then-
We'll go ahead and-
I do love coming, but you know.
No, 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 we'll go ahead and type the resolution in two weeks. If there's an issue-
Yep.
Right. If there's an issue, we'll contact you, but in the meantime, expect some offline conversation.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, Mr. Kessman.
Thank you, everyone.
So I'm not going to stay till the end, can you just-
The next item on the agenda-
Can you ask this question? Why are we getting into Hyde Park?
Is Chestnut Mall at Hyde Park? The applicants aren't here for this application, right?
No.
So what I'm going to do is move the last item ahead. This is best and brightest daycare. Would you happen to be here? Do you want to come up to the table?
So we've got to transfer this.
Could you, and by the way, consultants, you're free to go if you want to. Could you state your name for the record?
Sarah Sullivan.
And we already know what you're doing, but since this is televised, do you want to tell us what, tell us what you're proposing?
Yes. Currently, I run Bright Days camps of Regina Chaley. And I am part-time in the Hyde Park Elementary School building, running academic workshops roughly 40 days of the academic school year, when school's not in session for school-aged children. So I am in the building, and I am in the works to expand and offer more services to not only school-aged children, but for infants and toddlers, and support the working families in the community.
I think the use sounds great. I'm delighted that you're choosing to expand your business here in town. I'm serious about that. It's, the only questions I think all of us are going to have are sort of procedural or housekeeping, one of which is, this is a site plan application, right? So Ms. Moss, there was no site plan submitted. Ms. Moss has indicated that the school's looking for a survey, and so what she would accept, because this is her decision, not probably ours, is like an onion skin overlay to show what part of the building you're talking about using?
Yeah.
Right?
I have, I have this one right on me now, so.
This was provided to me by the building supervisor. And it's a, it's an outline of the building, but there's a property.
Oh. What would you like to see? Because this is, I know we want to ensure that we have a record of the use. So normally with the site plan, we don't just see the building, we see circulation, parking.
And in this case, things like outdoor recreational areas.
Correct.
And-
Absolutely.
And fencing.
Would you be, would you be using the outdoor areas for play, and, I mean, not with the infants clearly?
Right, for six weeks to 36 months, you know, there will be an area in the back, and, you know, the school district has offered, you know, and, you know, support to allow me to, you know, create an area for them to be outside. And with my school-aged children for before and after care, they have the playgrounds there currently. So, but the, the district has, you know, we've, we've got the backyard area, we've got the recreational fields there. But for, with, you know, the expansion for infant to toddler would be a small area in the back.
I assure you, all we're asking about is, because you're not taking over the whole school, is if there's another portion of the school that's used, what they would want, we don't know if, I don't know if, let's say there's another use to it, it doesn't involve children. I don't know if you are required legally to somehow siphon off the kids, so that they're kept away from any adults that might be allowed to go out, whatever. I mean, this is new territory for us, because you're not the first tenant to go in there, but you're the first sort of real day-to-day, you're going to be there all the time tenant. I mean, Rotary uses it, Hyde Park seniors use it for an occasional recreation. There's nobody there on a day-to-day basis, so. Just speaking as a resident, I'm happy to see it utilized this way, and it seems to fit really well with what you're proposing. Are you going to be in the back in the modern section, or are you in the-
Yes.
That's what I kind of figured too, okay.
I, you know, in what you're saying in terms of the use, the uses you're talking about Rotary and seniors, there's a community use of the building, are you nonprofit or not-for-profit?
I'm, I am for-profit.
You are for-profit. Now, I know with the confusion regarding how to treat it, this is a business, not-
No, but it's an educational use. It's regulated by the Department of Education, under our code, it's an educational use.
Okay.
You're switching from, what you're switching from is a non-commercial educational use to commercial educational use. So that's why I said it's housekeeping, because we want a record that it's a for-
Oh, it'll be a daycare center.
Daycare is listed as educational uses under our code too. So it would be a similar use to what it was, but still it's a commercial version of it, if that makes sense. So that's why we want a record of this for site plan, and I'm going to recommend right now that we also want to be able to circulate this to the fire department, the police departments, not because it's such a different use, it's just they need to know that it's being occupied in this area by, you know, potentially vulnerable population.
And they will be coming in for inspections, you know, they work hand-in-hand with the state.
Yeah.
You know?
We've approved daycares before.
Okay.
I believe there are certain fencing requirements also for daycares. They have to have certain outdoor requirements, so those should be on the plan-
That's what I was going to say, it's-
That you're proposing, designating those areas.
If they can, if they're, if the schools, the school, I hope, has a survey, if they have a survey, then you can, again, depending what Ms. Moss wants, and you'd be asking for waivers of a lot of the requirements, meaning you don't need to show where significant trees are, any of that, but to show the area of the outdoor use, and if you're fencing, what kind of fencing is proposed, just details like that, we'll be, if you want to meet with just a few of us offline with Ted, or I say offline, but, you know, informally here, we'll be happy to meet with you, discuss this and go through it with you to better, to help guide you through the process.
Yeah, thank you.
And I guess my question is, because long-term they do want to lease this property, it, the school would probably, the school district needs to kind of-
Have a survey.
Step it up a little bit, and they're going to need to identify what their property is and what's on it, because if they're going to successfully lease it, they need to basically have a site plan drawn up, even of just, of existing conditions.
I'm waiting for that.
My other, my other concern-
But it doesn't have to, it can be something, you know, if they do have the survey, that's a step. That's a step in the right direction.
My other concern is that under our, this is signage. I mean, we all appear, don't want your business to open and not succeed, so you probably want some sort of sign, advertising your business, best and brightest daycare. The way, we'll call this adaptive reuse, okay? That's what it is. If this becomes a shopping center, and I know you're never going to say it's going to be a shopping center, but under our code, a shopping center is defined as if there are three separate uses or businesses in one structure that shares parking, et cetera, et cetera, it's a shopping center. Right now, if you're the first tenant, you'd be able to put up a sign all by yourself, a free standing sign up front that says best and brightest daycare. But if you have two other, if the school district succeeds in finding two other tenants, the sign would have to be changed to what's called a directory sign.
Correct.
So I just, I don't want you to waste money. I want to figure this out. I'm trying to raise these issues so that you know, you're fully aware of, you know, as you advance. Typically, the site owner would pay and provide for a tenant directory sign, because-
Right.
They're giving you as part of the lease, the little panels on it, you know, for where you are, the bigger panels if you're a big anchor store, like say Stop &amp; Shop. But in this case, I have no idea whether taxpayer dollars would be legally used to provide a sign like this. I don't know. You're into an area that I'm not familiar with.
It sounds like if you have an offline meeting, you may want to invite a school district representative, so that we can talk about master planning a little bit, and what's the big picture.
Either Mr. Kurlander or the building's, uh, air-
Elliot.
Elliot, there.
Yeah.
One of the two, if not both, because again, I think this would be better handled at first by a little meeting with, an informal meeting with just a few of us from the board, non-core meeting as it's called, where you can explore all these issues. I didn't want to alarm you by raising them tonight, but I did want to make sure that you walked in aware.
No, I appreciate that, I appreciate that very much.
Particularly, I hate seeing people pay for signs, then have to be taken down, have to be redone quickly. It's possible that down the line, that you could put up your sign, and then they could, they could write in the lease that if any other sign changes occur, that there would be, the new tenants would have to pay or something, I don't know. We just have to work that out down the line.
Okay.
You're set so far back, I don't think the word of mouth is going to do it for you. I think you want a sign.
Right, off of Route 9 there.
Yeah, yeah. I would, if I were a business, put it that way. And given that you're sort of the first out of the gate, that's why we're confronting these issues that haven't been confronted so far.
Right.
And my, my preference is to have at least a survey.
Oh, yeah.
Shows the property lines and the placement of the building and the parking and the sidewalks and-
Particularly for, like I said, for, if there's legal requirements for, you know, recreational outdoor space for the children that you're watching. And by the way, what are your hours of operation? Do you go-
Six-thirty to seven-thirty, seven days a week.
That's, and do you, do you typically have like a morning and then a midday, and then an evening, drop-off and pickup, I should say? Do you allow people to drop off just in the afternoons, just in the mornings, and then?
Yeah, yeah.
Most daycares we've encountered are the same, the same. They have kind of a three cycle. Fortunately for you, unlike the last daycare we did, you've got plenty of queuing room there. This was the one that's on 9G, it was a, a neighbor had strenuous objections because of the length of the queuing area.
Yep, correct. Now, well, you know, I do want to offer before and after school. I'm not sure if I want to do that initially. But with my workings right now with school-aged children and the families that are with me, you know, last summer with camp, we operated camp at Regina Chaley, you know, they have young children, and they're really wanting this. And, but if, if there's a need for before and after care with busing, that's something that I'll, you know, meet with.
What we would do, I think what we would do, is sort of work through to an approval of the whole thing, so to speak, everything that you possibly think you could do. Whatever you don't do, then would have already been covered by us. And what we were just discussing, say phasing, meaning if you, this is kind of a work in progress, you know you have these hours, and you have this much business you want to commit to now, but later on you might be doing this. All we have to do is evaluate what the ramifications are, implications-
Sure.
Of that extra step, and then you don't have to come back to us to say, oh, I'm going to do evening hour, later hours, I'm going to be doing this, I may be having a bus. Because all, for us, we're just looking at the impacts. In other words, is there sufficient queuing capacity for a bus, for families? Is there enough that if, I mean, I presume that you're like the other daycares where kids just don't get to wander out, there's adult supervision during pickup, et cetera?
Absolutely.
You know, is there enough room, time? I mean, I think the answer to this already, yes, because it's been an elementary school, you're not going to have that big a population of students. We just have to go through the, not just have to, we are required to go through the process to make sure we've evaluated everything carefully.
Okay.
And it's just for your protection and for the safety of your population, your student population. Anything else, Ms. Moss?
No, that, that was an interesting thought that came up, because in other areas of the country where I've lived, the daycare have their own bus service, and they park the mini buses on the facility property, and they pick the kids up after school and they bring them back. It's, it's, well, you've lived in other areas of the country, so you've experienced that too, but that doesn't happen here very much.
No, it doesn't for some reason. Mr. Sotero, any preliminary comments? Ms. Polidoro? As I said, there's no escrow established, but I just thought you might want to weigh in. Any comments from the board so far? Let me start to my left, Mr. Signa?
Nope.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Dexter?
Already said it.
Ms., Mr. Oliver?
I think it's a great reuse of the site, and, you know, some of this housekeeping stuff that Chairman was talking about, it could be good for your business also to kind of get some things out on the table and kind of see, just to make sure you have that future there, you know, seeing the master plan.
So, thank you, and I think you've heard pretty much from the board, we all think it's a great idea, want to help you move forward. When, what are good times for you to meet? I imagine you're busy during the day doing daycare.
I teach at Duchess Community College, actually, so I'm, but my summers are booked, and, but I'm, I'm available.
Does Ms. Knapp have your email for me to contact you by email?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, I'm available.
And I have, I have Wayne and Elliot's emails too, because we work with the High Park Central School District often.
If they can get some site plans available.
Do you want to contact them first on that, or you already have?
I can, I can again.
And I'll, I'll email them too, because I think they should be here for any offline meeting.
In fact, in one of these rooms, I know that there's some, there's some, you know, they, they use some, I think they're just trying to locate the, you know, when they had the additions put on, which the lead-
They have to have had a survey when they had the additions put on, but that, those additions aren't that modern, I mean, aren't that-
They don't have to have that.
Okay, you're right, they don't. Maybe they didn't.
How old are the additions?
I didn't live here back then, I can put it to you that way, but I've only been here 20 years.
They're not subject to local building department requirements, they're regulated under the state, so I-
But they do apply to the state, and the state has to approve construction if they've got any aid whatsoever, and that's very, very meticulous.
So, I mean, what I'm trying to, I guess, get around is, how, how fast do you need to move? When do you want to open?
No survey.
I would like to open July 1st.
Okay.
You know, with, with summer camp and serving, you know, families fully in that location.
Then we should get moving quickly.
There's a frustration with having to go, you know, several places for the span of ages in a family. So to be all-encompassing by July 1st, and I'm in the application process for my license. So this is a part of that, so I'm working, you know, putting it-
Well, that would be a condition of any approval we offered anyway, that you have either prior or that you receive accreditation from the state. But the reason I'm asking is how fast I need to start setting up some meetings offline, and that revolves around your schedule. If you're teaching and doing daycare, I mean, is there a time of the day that's better or worse for you, mornings, afternoons?
Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, all day. I teach all day Mondays and Wednesdays. Every semester changes, but right now, I'm open Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays, all day.
That's all I need to know.
Yeah.
Seriously. And usually, Mr. Kurlander, the, the school district staff can usually meet any time of the day, as long as I give them enough time in advance to meet. So I'll poll membership and see who we can meet during the day, and I'll, I'll contact you via email, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Set up something up, and it'll say from Dupree or Best and Brightest is the subject line, one of the two.
Okay, I truly appreciate that very much.
No, 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 we're, like I said, we're very, we're happy to help. And it's also, I think many citizens in this town will be happy to see Hyde Park L filled up with something that's valuable.
Children.
Children again. And a service that's going to be really valuable to the community.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is, almost every town now is composed a majority of two-family, you know, wage earners, and daycare is a critical component to keeping that moving forward. So I think that, as you said, providing a-
And the jobs.
And the jobs as well, but also providing a place where you can have sort of one-stop daycare of different ages, rather than this is only this group, this is only this group. I think that's also going to be benefit to our, our community members.
Thank you, and, and there's individuals who work weekends and hospital staff that work 12-hour shifts on weekends, and we are, you know, accommodating, we want to accommodate them, you know, see what the trends are, but from the feedback we've gotten so far with the families that we know, with Bright Days camps and Regina Chaley School, my children attend Regina Chaley, so, you know, last summer we, I went in there to run the camp to raise money for the school and support the school, and just offer another, and it just, it really took off, and there was such a need, so.
It doesn't surprise me.
And I, I used to own a children's museum in Wisconsin, I built and operated a children's museum, and I, it was 2007, so I remember going to the board in Della Field, Wisconsin, and doing this. It's been a while, but every state's different. But again, there was, you know, there's a need, you know, the children, you know, there's things that can become obsolete, you know, but, you know, children and families, there's a need, so.
I did a story on the children's museum in Manhattan, and I had never been to one, I didn't realize it wasn't a museum at all, it's an interactive kind of play activity, but organized and structured.
Very interactive. Very interactive.
It's like, where's the work of art? Where's this?
It's children's handprints on the wall.
I was looking for Picasso in his Blue Period done by a five-year-old, so, but at any rate, as I said, we want to work with you, and I will email you shortly to set up a meeting, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in tonight, and for your patience. I was, I don't know what I was thinking, children's museum, works of art by kids, and I didn't see any of that. Anyway, the last item on the agenda, okay, we have, right, we had a referral by the ZBA to make comments on signage application, signage requests for Chestnut Mobile, which is located at Violet Avenue and Creme Elve, Route 9G and Creme Elve. We'd already approved it, it's been up and running for the facade changes they made, and change, they expanded the use of the grocery store inside. They've now come back in an unusual, to me unusual, application to the ZBA. They've requested both interpretation, two interpretations, and they've also requested area and use variances. The, some of the variances, particularly the use, or the area, some of them would not be required unless the interpretation goes one way. If it goes the other, then there's no need for it. So I'm sort of surprised that they put everything in at one fell swoop to the ZBA, but they did. I'll also point out, and I don't mean to be rude, but the way this was referred to is it was under a section of code that was not applicable. The section of code did not refer to the ZBA referring this to us, it was to the zoning administrator referring to county planning interested involved agencies. But nonetheless, we still want to ask a comment, and I had Ms. Polidoro, since she's the attorney to the ZBA as well, speak with the chairwoman of the ZBA today, and they're looking for us to provide guidance on all the requests. That means the interpretation, too, if we feel comfortable. So Ms. Moss sent out some letters today to us, I mean, to the zoning board of appeals, we were copied. In addition, if you had a chance to look at the original application, original request, just, I've kind of summarized it into five points, and I'm looking to the board tonight to give me direction, so I can prepare a letter at our next meeting, and we can vote on authorizing me to send that. But the first is, the interpretation would be, is the area that's proposed to say mobile, with a long blue ribbon around it, a roof or valance. Ms. Moss, if you'll recall, this is the roof over the canopy area. The canopy has columns that support the roof, and under our code, that makes it a building. It doesn't have walls, it's not enclosed, but it's still a building. Ms. Moss is, is viewing the outer area, it's a flat structure, the roof, she's looking at the side of it as being part of the roof. It does not appear to be a canopy, it doesn't project out, it doesn't, the thing is attached, it's an integral part of what functions as a roof. So it could also be viewed as a valance, and she attached to a dictionary definition of a valance, which is basically a curtain rod, covering to disguise a curtain rod. It can be full of jabeaus, swags, et cetera, but it's still something disguising something, and this is, seems to be an integral part. So her ruling is that it's a roof. They've challenged that to the ZBA, and so my first question is, do you want to weigh in on that? I'll, I'll add that, to me, it's a roof. If you look counter-corner across the street at Stewart's, that's a flat-roofed building, but they've got this sort of fake mansard things around the outside, that's where Stewart's is written, and I believe because that's, that's in addition to the side of the building, it's a decorative element, I would say that's not part of the roof, because it's not holding, it doesn't, not holding up anything, but wanting a canopy.
It's actually a canopy.
Canopy, I was going to say, it's, it's, it's a mansard, but it's a canopy in that sense. This doesn't seem to be the same. So first, do you guys want to weigh in on this? Don't run forward.
I think it's a roof.
Yeah, I'd agree it's a roof.
Okay. So we will be weighing in. The second question asked under interpretation, does the blue color band that accompanies the mobile constitute a sign, or is the blue band not part of the sign? Now, interestingly, what they've done here, or should I say sneakily, when we had the Mavis application, Mavis was here, and then it had the signature teal all the way down the line. Ted, under our code, that's a geometric pattern, so she took the area around it, the smallest areas around it, and called that a sign. That teal color appears everywhere that Mavis does, it's their signature color. In this case, the applicants have removed the word "mobile" from being superimposed or part of the blue band, they've moved it out so that mobile sits by itself with a white background, and there's a blue band around the rest of the roof. Correct?
That's correct. I also asked for details on construction of that, because I drove by the mobile on Ennis Avenue last night with, at Salt Point, and the blue is lit from behind.
So, I, I believe that you've already opined that the blue, in this case, is not a portion of the sign, or that you've looked at it as though it's not, because you've isolated the white background of the mobile as being the sign?
If, if the blue band went to the bottom, and it wasn't lit, it goes the full height, then you have the word "mobile" on a white background, and that becomes the sign.
That's what I thought.
But they took the, a strip of white and moved...
And carried it around.
Carried it all the way down to the end. So visually, it becomes part of the attracting device, and it ties the whole length together. So it was my opinion that the whole length of that...
Because of the addition of the white underneath there, correct?
Becomes part of the sign. Now, if it's lit, then it's all the sign.
Yeah. And so you've asked the applicants for clarification? Do we expect that in...
I've asked for construction drawing.
Okay. Do we expect for those to arrive before our next meeting, so that can inform our...
I would hope they arrive before the ZBA meeting next week.
Well, just so everybody knows, this may not come out at the next meeting, their next meeting is a week from today, and they are expected to take up the interpretation portion of the first, the first question only, the roof versus a valance, and then they'll be adjourning to the next meeting to decide the rest. And given that, we, it may take us two meetings to get through before we have all, because I don't want to write letters and then say, oh, this information came back, and it's different, and then rewrite them, et cetera. So we'll kind of punt on that, we're waiting to hear. Because I thought that the Mavis sign, the way it looked with, was, that was all signed to me, I'm inclined to go with your interpretation, but that's what everybody, that's up to everybody else. The third issue is, there's a freestanding sign they're proposing. First, it, it's a single pole, which is discouraged. Two-pole is acceptable, but monument is preferred, the low profile, as we all know. But the single pole, the measurement for the sign is measured to the pole, rather than to the projection of the sign. The sign projects toward 9G by five feet, so they might need a variance there, but they haven't applied for it yet. In addition, they're requesting an area variance for the height. They're requesting 21.75 feet, when the maximum allowed is seven feet, that's a 200% increase above allowed. And the size, they're allowed a 30-square-foot sign, the request is for 60.2 feet, or 100% of what's allowed. I'm inclined to say to both of those, absolutely not, that's a rezone. That, that's way beyond, that's 100 and 200% of what's, what's, that's crazy. In addition, I'm sorry, I'm using colloquialism, but in addition, that does not look like any sign that's been approved by this board in the last nine years. It flies completely, but I'll defer to my colleagues. What do you guys think?
What I think is, if you go... I agree with you, but it's not necessary there, anyway.
No!
It's absolutely not necessary.
No.
You're not going 70 miles an hour.
No, it's a light there, the speeds are slow.
Absolutely no reason whatsoever, for my mind.
No, not at all.
If you go by, first of all, their, their indication is, they kind of mix their arguments